2023, will you please join me as we all salute the flag with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Look at us go.
Thank you. And if our secretary would please take the roll call.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Blakely.
Here.
Commissioner Doris.
Here.
Vice Chair Hallie.
Here.
Commissioner Kine.
President.
Commissioner Mobley.
Here.
And Chairman Sykes.
Here, thank you. According to our actual bylaws, does the staff or the commissioners have an update or a change they'd like to make to the agenda?
No, staff does not have any changes.
Okay. And seeing none from the fellow commissioners, we'll go on to the approval of the minutes. You've had them in your possession for a little bit now, if you want to look those over. And we would entertain a motion for discussion.
Motion to approve minutes from last.
Hi, Dean.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Mobley and a second from Sandy. All in favor will take a voice vote. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we will take communication from the public. Members of the public can be heard on any item of interest, not on the agenda. Speakers addressing the commission will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Be advised that by law, our planning commission is not able to deliberate or take action on any issues presented during this time. Do we have any over Zoom?
No.
Anyone want to say anything?
Motion to close public comment.
We have a motion to close.
And a second.
And a second. We'll close oral comments from the public. Moving on to business, our first item is to review the 2022 Annual Housing Progress Report. Has there been any written communications to the staff regarding this item of business?
No, we have not received any written communications for this.
Okay, we'd love to have your staff report.
Okay. I need to. Okay, thank you for giving me an extra minute. All right, so what we have on the agenda tonight is the presentation of the Fortuna 2022 Annual Housing Progress Report. And where this comes from, the housing report is a requirement from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. So it's a state regulation that every city and county report on the housing that has been created, submitted, pending approval, or permitted or constructed with a certificate of occupancy. So the HCD does have authority over housing, the housing report, and also the housing element. So every city and county in the state is required to prepare a housing element. And Fortuna has done that. So we are in compliance with state housing law. The housing element is basically like a chapter of the general plan. So the general plan has, you know, certain, they're called elements. And housing is a special one because it has its own set of state laws as to what it contains. And basically, it's the city's blueprint for making, basically facilitating housing. So making it, you know, kind of streamlined and not, removing roadblocks to housing. So, and especially, well, housing in different income categories. So there is special focus on low income, very low income, moderate, and other sensitive classified housing categories. So, and there is a housing number, regional housing allocation that every city gets distributed a certain percentage of housing from each of those categories that we need to make that many units available. We don't have to construct them. We just need to demonstrate that we have the land with the appropriate infrastructure that those units can be built. So that's kind of the background as to why HCD requires a housing report. It's to, you know, basically demonstrate and give the housing numbers for their purposes, you know, demonstrate the number of units that have been constructed in each of those income categories. So that's the tables that you have attached to your staff report. And I can go over those really briefly. This, I did post the, at least on the PowerPoint, not in your packet. The regional housing needs allocation for Fortuna. You can see it on the overhead. The income categories are very low, low, moderate, above moderate. And then there's the total allocation. And actually, this is reflected in the housing report that's in your packet. One of those pages does, that we're required to report, does have the number of units that were constructed for this period based on these categories and compares it to the allocation for Fortuna. So the total number of units that are in our allocation are 290. And you could see those spread out over the four income categories. And then, this is just for interest, this is the housing allocation, the land use inventory that is in our housing element. So this has been adopted. And so you can see that the map shows that the yellow colored areas are the land that's available, developable. And they do, the HCD and the housing element law gets a little bit stricter for each of the housing element periods. And, you know, so for example, now they're requiring parcel by parcel evaluation. Whereas it used to be, you know, just identify a large area, calculate the density, and basically, you know, you have your units. But now they're demonstrating a site by site analysis that makes it a little bit more rigorous and, you know, and accurate. So anyway, so they do, they do look at each parcel. And there's a parcel list in the housing element. So they're all accounted for. And then the housing report. I did provide summaries for each of those pages, each of the reporting sheets. And I think that there's just a couple that are, have, you know, the more, for Fortuna, we don't report on all of those because they are not applicable. But Tables A and A2 in your packet lists the city's development applications that have been submitted and deemed complete, but not yet approved. And those are listed by income category for the year 2022. And in that fine print in your packet, there's, you can see that we've had 36 applications representing a total of 108 residential units. And that's because there's the 70-unit Orchard Apartment Building that gets counted as one application. So that table lists the single, each single family application as well as the multifamily. So that's why there were 36 applications, but 108 residential dwelling units. And that's shown on Table A. And then on A2, it breaks it down. Building permits, building permits that were issued. So there were a total of 75 units with building permits. And out of those, 16 were above moderate income units and two were moderate. So we didn't have any applications last year for low or very low income categories and only two for moderate. So the rest are above moderate. In years past, we've had a more significant number of moderate with apartment buildings and also with, you know, some grant funded restricted, income restricted units. But we didn't have any last year. And then Table B reports the city's progress towards meeting the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. And that is broken down according to that table that I showed you. So by, you know, basically just by income category. So the 18 units that were completed are counted towards that. So not all of the units that were submitted, that was 108 that I mentioned in the first, that are on Tables A and A2. Table B just reports the units that were actually completed. And those are the ones that get credited, you know, towards the RENA, the allocation numbers. So they have to be actually, you know, certificate of occupancy or final. And let's see, Table C does not apply. Table D is the narrative of the city's programs, of the housing element programs. So in the housing element, we're required to list, they're basically the general plan policies and programs, but for housing, and then a narrative as to the status of each of those. And I guess I would just point out, let's see, they're not on the overhead. But they're in your packet on Table, what is it, Table D? And I think the most significant ones are, there are three that are implementing, they're being implemented through the city's SB2 grant. That's a HCD grant where we're able to, it's got seven, seven separate programs, rezoning. Most of those are rezoning or creating standards with the help of consultants. So we did, we have completed the accessory dwelling unit ordinance under that program. And then we're also currently working on multifamily affordable standards, which will streamline, by creating objective standards, it will streamline review processes. So that's something that HCD is specifically looking for from every jurisdiction as a way to facilitate housing approval. So we are working on standards. Those will go to the planning commission for review. And then they would go to the city council for review as well. And those should be coming in the next couple of months. So that's something that you guys will be able to look at and comment on and make recommendations on. And then the other one is some other, what is it, low income housing standards for, it's actually like farm worker housing. So the HCD wants, you know, if we have agricultural land, which we do, we don't have much, but streamlining those standards, you know, obviously it's going to be more effective or applicable in larger farming communities. But it's still something that is an HCD kind of requirement. So that's going to be a simple zoning change. And we don't have a lot of, or any, farm housing.
Yet.
Yet. I mean, well, our farm, our ag zone land is down on Ill River Drive. So that's where the strawberry farm is and farming activities at the end of Ill River Drive. And then on Kenmore Road, the dairy, and it's the Nyberg Dairy. And I don't even think there is zoned agricultural anymore. I think it got zoned residential in the last general plan update. So anyway, so those are the things that we're implementing. And that's been reported on that Table D in your packet. And then E and F, let's see, EF and G, we don't have any of those requirements in Fortuna. So really, it's just the permit listing or the submittals and status. And then the RENA allocation, and then the general plan or housing element programs that we've got the most information on. And so I'll pass that back to you if you have any questions.
Now's the time for commissioners to ask questions of staff.
So on this, on this agenda item, you would just basically acknowledge and?
No motion made.
Yeah, a motion, no resolution, but there would be a motion to accept it and to direct staff to take it to the city council. The city council gives the final approval, the opposed to HCD.
That action's on close to the bottom on page seven, if you want to look at that. I have a question before we get there. Is the affordable housing how it's measured? Is that, do they actually have some sort of economical measurement of what is low?
Those are, they do. I don't know what they are off the top of my head, but they are based on, how do you choose those numbers?
Based on, it can be calculated various ways, but one of the ways that they will accept is based on the rent. And they actually have a calculator that you put the amount of the rent and the number of bedrooms for your county, and it will determine what the income level is. It's low, very low, moderate, or above moderate.
Does that answer your question? I'm sorry, I was focusing on the income categories.
Yeah.
The affordability.
No, that's great.
Average amount of rent that people are paying within the county?
Within the county. So each county would have a different amount. It would, you know, low and humble would be, you know, something else in Lassen County and something very different in, you know, San Diego or something like that.
Is there any part of the old mill site that recently sold that is zoned for residential?
There is not. Not the mill site itself. The adjoining land along Spring Street is residential. But there's nothing actually on that site. It's something that's being discussed, how to, you know, if it's appropriate and where it would be appropriate and how to incorporate it adjacent to, you know, a commercial site like that.
Any other questions?
I had a quick question. If you could clarify, on Table A, application status, you have approved and then disapproved. Is disapproved denied or is that just?
No, it's not. That's a definition that's presented by HCD through the directions on how to fill out the table. And it really, it means to them, in their definition, it means pending, basically pending approval. So accepted, but not approved as determined to be complete. So there's some, you know, incompleteness there, or maybe there's corrections that are required, that kind of thing. I know, it is an alarming phrase.
No, thank you.
Because not approved is really the more correct term.
Yeah, not yet approved.
Disapproved means action has been taken.
Yes.
Any further questions?
I just want to ask if you, if this report is comparable to last year or the year prior, whatever, comparable, is it kind of steady the same or is it different?
Based on the number of units, you mean? Yeah, I think it's a little bit less. I, Katie, did you happen to see when you were inputting these, did you happen to see that last year's numbers?
We've had a few less of the multifamily, mainly because the Smith Lane was completing. So, and the orchard is not yet under construction. So in that way, we have a few less of that. And then we had a few other, you know, smaller multifamily, fourplex, and that, and that sort of thing. As far as single family, we're pretty close, just, you know, a few less. But we had kind of a big boom there. There was a lot of big land and there was a lot going up. And some of those subdivisions are getting full now, so they're not being built out as quickly.
The cost of building has changed a bit in the last three years.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good question.
With, Brian kind of mentioned that, on page seven, bottom of the last paragraph, there were no applications submitted for low or very low income categories in 2022. These are market forces at play. There's nothing really that we can do as a planning commission, correct?
Right.
Okay.
There's, there's no effective redevelopment funds or anything coming from the state that would allow builders to come in and build low-cost housing?
I mean, there are grant opportunities, and we have a really small one that, for a city-owned property, that we would really only end up with like four, two to six units, something like that. With the grants, typically, those are associated with like a private developer who has a project, you know, who owns the land. And certainly sometimes cities will take that step and buy the land to create affordable housing. Fortuna hasn't, you know, gotten in, gone in that direction yet. But typically, the grants are going to supplement a private development.
So I knew this, my questions are going to be simple, but is it, am I to understand that we're not required to see that units are constructed? We're just required to have the allowable land available?
That's right.
And if people want to step in with private funding and build these, then?
Absolutely.
Okay, if there's not any further questions, we'd love to entertain a motion to accept the annual housing progress report.
Motion to accept the annual housing progress report.
Is there, go ahead, sorry. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second. We'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bennett.
I'm in favor.
Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Doris.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Kine.
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yes.
And Chairman Sykes.
Yes. Okay, our next item of business is number two, overview of the planning commission bylaws. Staff, have we received any written communication on this?
We have not received any written communication.
Okay, please give us your report.
Yeah, so, you know, with the other agenda item, the housing report being on the agenda, you know, basically city-generated and then not having a development project, I thought it might be useful to just bring the bylaws to the commission just for, you know, it could be review, it could be, you know, going with a direction such as revising them, whatever your interests are. I thought it would be helpful, you know, there's new planning commissioners and it might be helpful to just bring these, air them out, basically. And I don't want to go into a long presentation on them because I think that, don't want to get into any tediousness there. So if, you know, the planning commissioners, if you've reviewed them, if you have any comments on them, if you want to open up any kind of discussion, really, it's kind of intended for your, for your discussion, not me making any recommendations. But I suppose if I were going to make a recommendation over the long term at some point, I think it could be maybe cleaned up a little bit, streamlined, kind of organized in a more, you know, in a, just laid out in a more organized manner where the topics, I think the topics kind of jump around. You know, that's it. I think, you know, they give a pretty good outline for appropriate, you know, methods of running a meeting professional. It has a lot of pointers, it has a lot of directions for running, you know, how to engage the public, how to facilitate conversation with the planning commissioners. You know, it's, it's basic kind of meeting, meeting conduct. So with regards to the bylaws, I do have, I've got, so I wanted to keep it simple and let you guys kind of direct where you wanted the discussion to go, if at all. So I just kind of picked out, instead of going through the whole thing and doing a big presentation, I just kind of picked out a few little tidbits out of each. There's the bylaws, and then there's a couple of municipal code sections. And then there's a more of a handout or written, you know, meeting kind of guidelines. So for the bylaws, you know, it's just got basic stuff like how to, how to select officers, you know, and it does say in the, at the first meeting, it actually says January or, you know, basically the first meeting. And I did kind of use that as a guide, just to make sure, okay, this is what it says to do when we did the, when you guys did the elections, the last meeting, meeting proceedings. And then I thought it was kind of funny. So it does, this is where you would set your time by voting and then adding that to the bylaws. And it does say to begin at 6:00 PM. And then it does say that meetings shall end at 11:00. So I just wanted to assure you guys that we're not going to go past 11:00 because that's what your bylaws say.
Can we change that?
Yeah, you can go as late as you want. I don't know if you'll pass.
No, I'll make it like.
So I can go over these three slides or you can stop and discuss at each?
So honestly, I know most of, in the past, we usually break out of here by 10:00 if it's getting that bad.
Yeah, that's the latest I've ever seen it go.
Yeah. So should we make that motion to do that?
I don't think it needs to.
Or do we have to bring it up?
I mean, I don't think you need to go earlier. You can end whenever you want. I don't think you need, if you want to make it earlier, you can end it.
Leaving here at 10 o'clock instead of 11:00. I mean, a five-hour meeting, if we're not getting anything done by that, we're not getting anything done.
I might make the point that the bylaws state that a motion for adjournment can happen at any point after the meeting's opened. So technically, if we, as a body, wanted to adjourn right now or right after the, right after the opening, before we pledge allegiance, we could, we can do that. And it's provided for in the bylaws already, so.
I don't imagine anybody would stop you if you had to leave early.
It's been, there's been a few that we've gotten here.
A few, yes.
I apparently, according to Katie, have been on this for four years and we've never gone anywhere near 11:00.
I just have a question before we turn it back for the finishing of this report. Mr. Mobley, have you, how long ago has it been since this commission?
I know when we did the one thing that went building, I know we were there like three times, like three times in a row, that it finally got to a point where I just said, I'm done. We're not going, the meeting is going nowhere.
Yeah.
And 10 o'clock hit and I'm like, I'm calling for a motion.
Okay. So it's something we should be aware of, or you can make a motion tonight if you want.
It's just where, you know, I think it's just where the meeting goes. If we're not going anywhere, and, you know, the room's full and we just keep hearing the same thing over and over from, from people, and it's not going anywhere, we're not making any kind of decision, it's time to stop something and regroup and look at it from a different perspective because we're not, we're not doing anything except for wasting time and space.
Yeah, and maybe, I mean, it can be.
Early in the morning and staying way late, and it's not helping them at all. It's not, I don't think super long meetings where we're not accomplishing. If it's accomplishing something, we're doing someone, I have no problem. But those, you can justify that those meetings were going nowhere.
Yeah, and at some point in the, and, you know, typically, and it did happen in those cases, that the applicant agreed to consider, you know, some changes. And so the meeting was continued.
Right.
Twice.
And the next one went that length and.
So that's a way, you know, another way to end a meeting is to continue the discussion to the next meeting.
I have a question. If you made a motion and we agreed to change the end of the meeting to 10 o'clock, and a meeting took place where we were making progress on an issue, and 10 o'clock came, could we make a motion to continue the meeting?
I'm sure that you can. I mean, the bylaws, I believe, you know, that you would have that ability to consider the bylaws and decide to continue.
You've got an endpoint that it's 10 o'clock, but like you said, if things are going well and we see, you know, some light, you know, the tunnel, you can make a motion, continue it. Otherwise, you can just say it's 10 o'clock, see you next week.
Hey, along those lines, can the commission, I didn't see anywhere in the bylaws to take a recess. Have you guys ever, in the, staff, have you ever seen this commission take a recess? Like a 10-minute break when you get those long meetings?
I don't remember. The council takes recesses.
We've done that a couple of times since I've been here.
Probably at those same meetings.
You can see, when you see people vegetated in the aisles.
Well, staff, continue. What else did you want to bring up?
Oh, just a couple of other things. So I did look at the municipal code because I know that there are a couple of, in, oops, Chapter Two or Title Two. That is the section for the commissions, so the council, commissions and boards. And so there are a couple of sections referring to the planning commission. And it has different code sections than what is in your bylaws. They're similar. And I just thought it was interesting and I wanted to share it with you. There is the requirement for the financial disclosure. Something that we, you know, the city requires to be submitted every, is it every year for the planning commission? It is. You guys do it every year. And staff, we do it every year. So it's, it's actually that, now that, so that's a local, like a law that, you know, ordinances our laws. It was interesting to see that in there. And then the attendance, which is not in your bylaws, but it's in the code, and it does require, has an attendance requirement of. does require, has an attendance requirement of, if a commissioner is absent from 25% of the scheduled meetings or three consecutive regular meetings, then that position is vacated. But then it does say unless by permission of such board or commission expressed in the minutes. So I think that's kind of a hidden little code section that I thought it might be helpful for you guys to know that.
Can I clarify something? On page 29, which is page 5 of the bylaws, Section C, it does address the absences, but it's in keeping with what you're saying. If any commissioner should be absent for two regular meetings of the planning commission during the calendar year without notification of the commission expressed in its official minutes, he or she shall relinquish his or her seat on the commission. So I guess the point, regardless, is that we all need to be here just as, well, all the time, really.
Yeah.
Because we need that four votes for us to actually act in majority.
Yeah, thank you for noticing that.
Yeah, I hope that's okay.
It's kind of an odd place to have it under vice chairman.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know how I got there.
But it's, I just think it emphasizes the point for attendance.
Thank you.
Same. It's 25.
Get there.
So I'm assuming that the financial disclosures are form?
700.
700?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you for turning this on, everybody. I know it's a little bit tedious.
The city, I imagine, provides help, or you can go online and look at other commissioners or other city council members if you have a tough time doing that, correct?
Yeah, the city's not allowed to advise on the content type of forms.
Well, I, I know, I would help a fellow commissioner just get, you know, get your act together so that it gets into the city, so that we're compliant.
And we are.
And Stephanie would too, right?
Yeah. Yep, or you're going to get $100 fine if you don't do it.
All right, that's all I have on the codes. And then the handbook, I just accidentally came across that handbook, and I know that the League of California Cities puts out some really good writings and advice and direction. And so since it kind of follows with the topic of the bylaws, I just thought I would attach that to your, to your packet for some extra reading. And I just, you know, there's a table of contents, I just pulled out a few of the sections. There's a section on when to abstain and disqualify yourself. And it gives the advice of, you know, remembering to think about that when we're reviewing agendas to identify any conflicts for yourself. You know, typically, they're financial or it can be perceived conflicts of interest, like if it's your, you know, close family member or something like that. So there are times when disqualification or abstention is required, and other times where it's recommended if there's a potential or an appearance of a conflict. But there's a lot more in that, in that section that is helpful. But I just thought, you know, when we're looking at agendas, to take a moment and think about if we have any conflicts with those applicants.
Is everybody up to speed on Brown, on the Brown Act?
That's a loaded question.
There's a lot to the Brown Act, you know, so you might look at that section.
We're gonna have coffee tomorrow morning and talking about it, right?
Right.
Yeah, and it's, you know, I read that section and, or parts of it, and it did indicate that it's, it's fine to meet in public, even as a whole group, as long as there's no discussion about projects. So if it's completely neutral and unrelated, then it's fine. What's that?
Upcoming projects.
Right, yes. And not, and it's, it's also had the reminder of not talking, being careful not to talk about projects to members of the public in a way that demonstrates a bias on the project.
Ms. Shore, do you think that the Brown Act is in part covered, isn't it covered in the ethics training that we're now required to take once a year where it was that internet module thing that the city sent out to us?
They, there was, I think there was a section on open meetings.
And I don't know that we necessarily, because that's law now that we do that, correct?
Yes.
Is it us in the city council that does that ethics training? So if you're new and not familiar with that, the, somebody from the city will send us out a link to do on the computer. It's actually a two-hour training, isn't it? And you have to spend two hours. And it does go over the Brown Act. And then also, is it the League of California Cities or do they, did they rename themselves and they do training locally like every other year, don't they?
Yes, that comes from the city's insurance group. So they do training on different topics. And I don't remember their new name.
So if we want to learn more about the Brown Act, what would we do as individual commissioners?
So hopefully you get, you know, you get emails and I, we can make sure that the city clerk's office has you, you know, as a reminder to have you guys on that mailing list so that you can see those and sign up for them at your option. Other methods?
Google.
Google. Read the section in the League of, in the planning commissioner's handbook. Do the mandatory training. I'm not sure what else there is, you know.
Was there further things that you wanted to cover on your slides?
No, that's fine.
Okay, was there anything, fellow commissioners, that you wanted to bring out from reading through these? Or questions? Any question? Don't think a question's stupid. We want to help one another.
Yeah, and anytime, if you have any questions, you know, you can always email, just don't make it a serial email. So don't, don't necessarily, but what we do when we send out emails is we do a blind copy on everybody so that it's not an accidental serial meeting. But yeah, you can always feel free to call or email if you have any questions. Or bring it up during the planning commission, you know, staff communications, feel free.
Do we currently have any folks interested in the alternate member vacancy or is that just still?
I haven't heard of anybody, any applications.
I have a couple of things. One thing I noticed in the bylaws is that when a roll call vote is taken in our bylaws, it says if the commissioner wants, he or she may state why they voted a certain way. I haven't seen that done yet. And when we were meeting over Zoom, there was a lot of confusion on closing the hearing. And I noticed on Item J of Page 13 of our bylaws, which is 37 of the packet, motion's not required to close public hearing, that it can just be closed and we're off and going. And also, I noticed that the chair and vice chair, we want, the goal in our bylaws is for other people to be the chair and the vice chair in the future. And that's annually. And also, irrelevant and off-the-subject comment, comments will be ruled out of order. You guys got anything else?
Thank you for participating and thank you for the first agenda item for moving that along.
Okay, we'll move on to, to planning commission staff communication.
I don't have anything to add other than what we've just discussed.
Very well, with nothing else pending, we will entertain a motion to adjourn tonight.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very well, meeting adjourned, thank you.
That was fun.